I'd like to call an order, the Thursday, June 26th, special call meeting of the Stanley County Board of Education. The first thing we have is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve?
I'm set. Our review period in this session. All those who say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda is approved. Next, we have a question.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with thankfulness and humility. We're grateful for this opportunity to meet as one, to work on decisions and choices and things that we have to do for our children here in Stanley County schools. And we humbly request your guidance and direction in our thoughts and our minds and our hearts that we do the best thing for the kids and their families. And finally, Lord, we continue to pray for all of the students, Stanley County School students that are on summer break, that they come back to school soon, healthy, happy, and ready for an exciting year. In God's name, in Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
To the Lord of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Next on our agenda is a closed session. We will be going into closed session for personnel matters, North Carolina Jones Statute 143, 318, 11A6. Student matters, North Carolina Jones Statute 143, 318, 11A1. Attorney-client matters, North Carolina Jones Statute 143, 318, 11A3. And acquisition of real property, North Carolina Jones Statute 143, 318, 005. Do I have a motion? We go in closed session?
Move. So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are in closed session. Okay, call us back into open session. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes. I know Ms. Poplin has one said that she's wanting to pull.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to pull the June 3 regular meeting minutes out for an amendment.
Okay. You want to go ahead and tell us what that amendment is, and then what we'll do is we'll leave these put, and when they will vote on those next month.
Okay.
Or it'll be an office only made.
Yes, I would like to amend under the section titled Approval of Consent Agenda to please add the following to Ms. Whitaker's addition from last month. It is the duty of the Board of Education and the Presiding Chair to address and confirm any legal questions brought before the Board during a meeting. These issues should be addressed as they arise by an attorney, and that attorney's advice should be followed, even if the meeting must be halted to obtain such guidance. In response to Ms. Whitaker's comment that no references were made to specific general statute or relevant policies, no one Board member can possibly memorize 9,400-plus Board policies or every North Carolina general statute. However, if a Board member has concern that one of these is being violated, or that should not, that should not prevent the counsel of an attorney nor prevent the Board from considering the issue at hand solely because the number cannot be regurgitated.
Okay. We'll have, we'll have hope at that addition and then bring that back to us at our August meeting.
Thank you.
So that only leaves then the June 3 special called meeting minutes that need to approve. So do I have a motion to approve those as presented, just the June 3 special called meeting?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion on those? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Those are approved. Next on the agenda is curriculum and instruction. Mr. Lamplumber?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I have placed the document in front of you that's also in Board Docs, just so that you have better access to it. I'm seeking approval tonight for our 2025-26 Alternative School Modified Accountability System. This only affects Stanley Academy Learning Center. We have the ability to look at how our alternative schools are rated. The state gives us three options. Option A, which is the standard school performance grade that we see with our other schools. Option B, which calculates 20% persistence, 20% achievement, and 60% growth. And option C is kind of an open in the air, more or less, that we can propose what modifications we would put out there for it with some other formula that then the State Board of Education would have to approve for us to use. Traditionally, historically, we have used option B, 20% persistence, 20% achievement, and 60% growth. And we are looking to go with that option B route again for Stanley Academy Learning Center. So we just need a motion to move forward for next school year with option B for SALC.
Any questions for Mr. Plumber? Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the 2025-26 Alternative Schools Accountability System as presented.
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
All those, any, any other discussion on those? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plumber. Mr. Duttony, you are finally up.
Well, it's about time. My 15-minute presentation has took a while. In the, on the agenda, you have the budget amendments that is as of June 30, 2024. Actually, these were as of today, I mean, as of yesterday, that we've got everything sorted in balance at this point for our budget. You'll see on the first page of Budget Amendment 2, our state funds and what we come up, what was the ending final budget for state funds at $74,870,927.49. Page two, our local current expense fund, you'll see that the final budget there ended up being $17,561,339.18. Page three and four is your federal programs budget. The total budget there ended up being $11,000,15,311.08. And that's, you know, had the remaining part of the ESER money that was carried over from last year until September to be spent by December. The next page was our capital outlay. You'll see that our ending budget there is $9.9,282,864.25. Our next two pages is our child nutrition fund. You see, our budget ended up being $6,859,947.66. And then the last two pages is your actual other special, other Pacific Revenue Fund, or your Fund 8, is what a lot of people still call it. Our ending budget there is $2,437,119.42, with our total budget of expenses and revenues being $122,27,509.8. So at this point, we, we need approval for those budget amendments for this school year. And then the auditor, when they come in September, will finalize the financials associated with this budget.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Duttony?
I have a question. Mr. Dutton, what was the, what was the total expense for the, thus far, for the central office, the new central office?
Um, hold on just a minute. The total expense, central office-wise, there is several pots of money that the central office comes from. We have some in federal funds, some in state funds, some in local funds. So, hold on just a minute, and I'll give you some totals on that. Not including the child nutrition.
Correct. Yeah.
Almost got it.
You're good. Thank you for doing this.
Okay, you're welcome. And this, this may, there may be a little, little bit more, but just rough estimates, picking up all the salaries that's necessary for that. Oh yeah. Can't get this formula right. Okay. Total central office at this point, just as a rough figure, was $2,564,635.64.
Can you say that just a tad slower? And if you don't have the answer to this, so we don't have to continue to wait. As far as the new central office building, rough estimate, how much has gone into the new building, cost to purchase and renovation? And that $2 million, that's, that was for central office?
That was just salary and, and the utility costs for the central office.
Okay, thank you.
This won't take near as long, because this is not that much.
Say that one more time, $1,800,000? Thank you so much.
And, and $2,000,000 if you want to add to $2,000,000.
And I hate to do this, but I have a question. I'm just looking for an explanation. Under the child nutrition on page six, the indirect costs allocated, can you tell me what that is?
That's, that's the amount of indirect costs that we can charge the program. If it is financially stable, we can charge the program for indirect costs. And what that is, is the administrative cost that it charges us, the school system has to pay to run the program. So that would be like utility cost, because the child nutrition program does not pay their utility cost. So that's one of the line items that we can charge for.
One, one more question. For the central office building and the renovations, what fund did that come from?
Capital outlay.
Thank you.
Mr. Duttony?
Yes, ma'am.
Everything that's listed here with the ESER funds?
Mm-hmm.
Now, has that completely been depleted, all ESER funds as of now?
Everything that was available that we could spend. There was a couple of PRCs that we did not, or was unable to spend due to no longer having the program after July, after June 30.
Right.
And, but other than that, everything that we could spend up through December 31st, it was a spend.
We spent it, and so it's all been depleted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Mr. Duttony, out of this, this year's budget, do you know how much ESER funding was a portion of that?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. Let me just pull my other cheat sheet out, and I can tell you that.
Because I think it's important for the public to understand that, that even though that money came out of 2020, it's ran through 2025. Because as far as we know, we're not getting any, any more of that correct.
$1,889,972.65 is what's the ESER funds that's in your federal budget.
1,889? And that was money that was essentially COVID ESER money?
Yeah, that was all ESER money.
That we're still spending through this school year.
That was carried over from June 30, 2024, that we were able to encumber by September and spend by December 31st.
Thank you.
And I think that, I want to say, Mr. Duttony, and kind of piggybacking off what Ms. Poplin has said or gone with this, I know, and Dr. Dennis. I would be remiss if I, if I did not say that I was very pleased with how our system used the ESER funds as in comparison to other systems.
Yes.
That ended up employing people and then having to let them go.
Yeah, and some of those systems are our neighbors.
They are our neighbors. So, thank you.
And just to add to that, I think we did a good job of using everything that we could to supplement our budget during, during those years. And I know sometimes that took some extra work and getting some extra permissions on you guys, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of communication with the state to verify it. And then, like you said, we were able to save in capital outlay a lot of the line items when it come to air quality that we were able to spend for HVAC units and anything of that sort that would improve the air quality in our schools. We were able to use that. So, yes, we, and that's where we, we were able to build up our fund balance in capital outlay because of that, so.
And that's why I asked for that number, just so that we could see how much of this budget was still left of that ESER money, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you just make that statement again about because we had the ESER funds, we were able to use those funds on other things which enabled us to grow our fund balance?
Yes, ESER III funds had, was written or was given to us, or given to the schools where we could be able to improve our air quality. So, in our ESER III budget, we were, there was a line item there that we added a lot of our HVAC and air quality initiatives that was, would have normally been paid out of capital outlay, we were able to pay out, pay them out of ESER funds. So that was able to build up our capacity and our fund balance and capital outlay and do other things that's neat, that was necessary to be, to be done during that timeframe.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Duttony? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Motion to approve the budget as presented by Mr. Duttony.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed, no. The budget is approved. Mr. Duttony, if you will continue with the budget resolution?
And of course, you know, we do not have a state budget from the state yet. As of Tuesday, webinar that I was in, it could be as, they were expecting one, it could be as late as October before we get a state budget. And if you know a little bit about school finance, you don't get a federal budget until you get the state to give us a budget. So, they can say we have a planned allotment of federal funds, but they cannot award us any additional federal funds above and beyond what we got the previous year if you do not have a state budget in place. So, if our legislators do not approve a state budget, we won't get no more federal money until that happens. So, at this point in time, yes, we do have our funding being allocated from our county commissioners, but we always try to present all our fund, all our budget at one time. So at this point in time, we ask for a budget resolution to take our 24-25 budget into the 25-26 year until an approved budget is done. And that's what the sheet is that I have, that I've give each one of you states that in compliance with the North Carolina General Statute 115C-434, interim budget, the Stanley County Board of Education approves the continuing budget resolution for the purpose of paying salaries and usual ordinary expenses until a new budget has been adopted. This action is required by the state of North Carolina not having our approved budget in place. So, that's what we need to have approved tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Duttony?
I just have a statement that it seems like this is every year.
It is. Unfortunately, that's.
Every year, we start a budget without.
I've been in this for 26, going on 27 years, and I've never known that we've had a budget effective July 1st at the state.
Exactly.
By, by July 1st.
Anything else? Okay, so if not, then I entertain a motion to approve the continuing budget resolution as presented.
Motion to approve the budget resolution as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye? All opposed, no?
Okay.
It is approved.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Duttony. Next on our agenda is a Personnel Agenda Report. Ms. Hedrick?
Good evening, Board. Before you, you do have the June 26 Personnel Report. Section 1 requires no action, it is simply for your information. Section 2 has been amended as discussed earlier this evening and does require your approval.
So I entertain a motion to approve Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda.
Motion to approve Section 2 of the Personnel Agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on those? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick. So next on our agenda is the National Motto for County Vehicles. We basically had a local pastor that I think had taught with each Board member individually. And there is an interest in displaying our national motto, "In God We Trust," on locally owned assets such as activity buses, maintenance vehicles, and county-owned cars. It would not apply to Yalla school buses, since those are not owned locally, those are owned by the state. So there is, there is a strict thing there that DPI has instructions that strictly prohibits in any unauthorized alterations to school buses. That includes any kind of decals or slogans. That includes any kind of decals or slogans, so we're not allowed to make any changes to those. Or if we do do things to school buses, they could remove those school buses from service. So this is strictly just talking about white activity buses, county cars, county vehicles, maintenance vehicles. It is only focusing on vehicles that are owned by the county. We do have 24 activity buses, we have 63 cars and service trucks and vans that we use, so that gives us a total of 87 vehicles that this would be applied to. Any discussion on that?
What is the cost to add this to the vehicles?
We don't have an actual cost, I will tell you, in the discussions that I had with the pastor who contacted us, as he really feels like that we'll be able to get, or he would be able to get other churches to make donations in order to cover the cost. But we would definitely have to come back to the board when, with the cost of that.
Madam Chair, just to add to that, I was going to say, he had made that statement to me also, because I asked about costs and stuff, when he called me, and he said he thought he could at least help with that, if not get that covered.
Right. He's actually, it'd be like, maybe even a magnet or type of decal, it would not be painted on the bus itself. And sort of what we envision is, if you look at the sheriff's vehicles, because those are county-owned, they have "In God We Trust" on there, so it'd be something similar to that. We would try to kind of mirror that look on our vehicles.
If I'm not mistaken, I think some of the city vehicles may also have those on them, not 100% on that.
Yeah. So it would, it would take a motion from the board for us to be able to move forward with this. Like I say, I really feel like, from the conversations that we've had, that the cost would be minimum, minimal to us.
I would, I would propose to make a motion to move forward with this, as long as they come up with the funding to do that. We, we have other things that are very important in, in the system.
And I will second, for discussion purposes, and also to move the item forward to find out.
So we have a motion that to do the decals or the magnets, "In God We Trust," to our county-owned assets, as long as there's no cost to the school system. Okay? So I have a motion and a second for that. Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, so is that going to come back in the way of cost and like design or?
We can, if you'd like.
Like where, you know, the school system, the board can look at it and then make that sort of final decision?
We can do that.
Okay.
All right. So we will, we will bring that information back to the board. We do have a motion to move forward with it and a second, and we will come back to the board with sort of what that layout will look like, and if there is any cost to the school system, we'll bring that back to the board also. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we will move forward with that. Perfect, thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I just ask, and it may be something that we talk about maybe at a work session or something, but I know, I think Pastor Brown had taught with all of us, and, you know, he has that real desire to, to see this on all of our buses, even though we know we can't do anything with the yellow school buses. However, I guess, and I believe he's talked some with legislators, but it's a start with what we're doing, so I just wanted to just say this, I'm not meaning to take motion or anything like that, is it just something that we might want to look at in a work session and think about, would we want to do a resolution from the Stanley County Board of Education and send that to our representatives to further explore any thoughts in the legislature as to, could anything be on the yellow school buses? And I know that has to come from Raleigh.
Right. We can definitely add that to some, I've got a list of some things that we need to work on during the work session, we can definitely add that to that list. Okay, so if nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second, Ms. Watson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you.